I did not do that.
He never waves at you, but she waves at another guy that she thinks is.
I saw her purse it.
Yeah, he's on my seat. I didn't even see him. Next time, next time, come up and poke me in the back of the head. Yeah, yeah, I'm so sorry. I would not do that on purpose.
Thanks for letting us know.
I did, I just.
I'm just giving you a hard time.
He sang mine. Cleaned off the whole.
It's no scratches, correct?
You got Justin?
Mine's gotta be mine, the special one.
I don't know.
Can we get serious? We're fixing to have a meeting.
It defeats the purpose, doesn't it? Aren't you supposed to have thought of what you're doing?
Are you serious? Oh, gosh. Can you hear?
Once, once they're approved, then we can shift them.
Always down.
Alright, so what did you want?
Do you want to pray? Jason, do you want to pray tonight? Why they're not eating them right here? Why are they not right there?
Because I'm going to eat them.
That is rudeness. Just a bunch of rudeness.
I'll enjoy it. Completely selfish.
Ah, that's beautiful.
Maybe I'll have to do that. There's meetings coming up. I cook for it.
So everybody ready? Everybody.
Yeah, I did. I gotta go now.
Yeah.
Awesome. Don't go talking about ribs.
Amy? You ready to, uh, call the order, roll call, and establish a quorum for the City of Perkins regular meeting Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, six P M?
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number two, will you stand and pray? Commissioner Jason Cox has agreed to lead us in prayer tonight.
Heavenly Father, I thank you so much for this day, and I thank you for this, uh, for this time to come together. Lord, I just pray for your wisdom as we make decisions, not only for our city, but our community. And we ask that you guide and direct our path. We love you, Lord, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Alright, number three, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America led by the Perkins Tri- and Demon Senior softball players, at least some of them. Come on in, ladies. Come on up. Okay, come to the front. Alright, tell us your name.
I'm Maddie.
Maddie who?
Castle, Maddie Castle.
Here are you, Ms. Brown.
I'm Addie Brown.
I'm Taylor Stanley.
I'm Jalen Cox.
Alright, and you guys are all seniors headed out, right?
Yes.
Okay, step out in front. I miss you in the little kids' P E, but, you know. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's delete the flag.
Let's delete the flag of the state of Oklahoma. It symbols the peace, not all people.
Okay, get in front of the flag. Picture time. Commissioner Cox is gonna take a picture with you tonight.
I get the picture to let you know.
Sure do.
I have a feeling you would do that.
You know? There's a big old bus, and I just threw you under it.
You did.
Cause I can.
She did?
No, no, gotta switch.
Yeah, that's about it. The daughter?
That's the daughter. Thanks, girls.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
Love you. God bless. Okay.
You know what's gonna do that?
I kinda had feeling good.
Okay. Continue. Item agenda number four. Consideration and action on consent agenda. Commissioners, do you have anything?
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted everybody to note that you have a corrected sales tax. I had a little error in my formulas. So this is the corrected one. It's just a few dollars between two of them, so. Nothing really of note, except to note that it is corrected.
I want to get a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Pass on number five. Number six, public appeals petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the city commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items that are not on today's agenda. Anything? Pass. Number seven, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement with Judge John E. Como, Jr. Did I say that right?
Camel.
Camel.
Mayor, Judge Camel is not available to be here tonight, but staff recommends, reapprove the agreement and reappoint him.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Judge, Judge John E. Camel, Jr.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Think we, did we jump ahead a little bit? Consideration, discussion, and possible action to reappoint Judge John E. Camel, Jr.
Staff would recommend reappointment.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Judge E. Camel, Jr.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sorry, Vice Mayor. Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's right. Just wait. Number nine, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement with Judge Sidney Wade Shaw.
Judge Shaw is here tonight. I'll see if anybody has any questions or if you'd like to say anything. We would recommend approving the agreement.
Like to say anything, Judge?
Uh, well, just real briefly, the, uh, it continues to be my honor to serve here for the City of Perkins, a great opportunity. I saw that Tiffany, uh, sent me an email today where she reminded me that I'm in my thirteenth year.
Oh, wow.
Which doesn't seem possible, but I guess time flies when you're having fun. But the staff, uh, at City Hall, and I get to work with Tiffany and Peggy, they're great. Seriously. They're, I've been in some communities, and I don't mean to diss them, but this one's good. Very good. So, uh, it'd be my honor to serve again as municipal court judge, and appreciate again the opportunity that's been afforded in the past.
And thank you both for the letter that you wrote to us.
I don't, I don't take credit for that. That's Judge Camel's work, but it was very good.
Yes, very thorough. Appreciate it.
And I'm a little slow tonight. I should have said this before you started talking about the judges, but there has been a, a state statute passed that requires new, certain additional cert, uh, qualifications for municipal court judges. Doesn't affect ours because they were completely qualified even under the new qualifications, but it also, um, requires certain certification and continuing education that is not minimal. Um, so we're fortunate they both stayed with us and maintaining those additional requirements. Um, they did request, and, um, and I just, I just wrote it in, uh, fifty dollar per docket additional, or increase in pay. They haven't had an increase in in two thousand and eight. So fifty dollars a docket since two thousand and eight. Um, so that is the, that I believe those were the two changes that we made to their contract from last year, was just to put in there that they will maintain the qualifications that are now required, and we increased their pay per docket.
Absolutely. You got it?
I'll make a motion to, where we at, number nine?
Number nine. First.
I'll make a motion to approve agreement with Judge Sidney Wade Shaw.
Second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number ten, consideration, discussion, and possible action to reappoint Judge Sidney Wade Shaw. I make a motion to reappoint Judge Sidney Wade Shaw.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number eleven, oath of office for Judge John E. Cam- uh, Camel and Judge Sidney Wade Shaw, and we'll just go ahead and jump to Judge Shaw right now. See if I'm ever. You think so? Hey, doing the kid. Ready?
Yes.
Aye, Judge Sidney Wade Shaw.
Aye, Judge Sidney Wade Shaw.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not?
And that I will not.
knowingly, receive directly, or indirectly?
knowingly, receive directly or indirectly?
Any money or other valuable thing?
Any money or other valuable thing?
For the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty?
For the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty?
pertaining to my office?
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law?
Other than the compensation allowed by law?
I further swear or affirm?
I further swear or affirm?
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as municipal judge for the City of Perkins.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as municipal judge for the City of Perkins.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Well, I feel relieved just to get through that.
I've administered it a few times.
Take it that much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna go pick up the heads from dance, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Okay. Or I make a motion that we pause this, uh, you don't need to now?
I think you can just, can't she just pause? Or can't she just do a resource?
Oh, yeah, yeah, she can pause.
Okay, just pause the, uh, regular meeting and open up. At what time? Six eleven?
Six eleven.
And go to the PIDA meeting? Alright, Amy, you ready? Just tell me when you're ready. Okay. The Perkins Industrial Development Authority regular meeting Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, roll call. Call the order, roll call, and establish a quorum.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, consideration and action on consent agenda. Anyone? Renee? Rhonda?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Yeah, I got it. Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Renee? Rhonda?
Yes.
Number four, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the Perkins Industrial Development Authority board members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items that are not on today's agenda. Number five, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the Perkins Industrial Development Authority operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Staff report?
I would be fine. And I dozed off for a minute, but now I'm back. Uh, so this year, right now, budgeted for PIDA is one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. That's, uh, one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars for the audit, and then a hundred and eighty dollars, we always just budget something in case we need some sort of computer support or anything of that nature. So, one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars is what we're looking at right now for PIDA.
Renee, Rhonda, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Here to me. Well, settle, clear, name, ma'am. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion, uh, to accept the Perkins Industrial Development Authority operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Actually, if you don't mind withdrawing your motion, you're, if you don't mind withdrawing your.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Don't we need to wait until we approve the whole entire budget?
Well, we need, yes.
Okay.
This was, the possible action here would be if you were to direct her to go back and make some changes.
Okay.
But if you're not going to, if no one wants to move to direct.
Cause this is just the first.
Not her, but direct a change. Since y'all can't direct her.
Your staff.
Then, yeah, that's you. Um, then no action. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so no action, and we'll move on to number six. Consideration, discussion regarding PIDA involvement in new library site renovation. Staff, report?
Okay, so, as you know, uh, voters for the city approved, uh, sales tax increased over certain parks and library improvements, conditions, uses. And that caused, and that means that the city or one of its authorities, they have the opportunity to borrow money and pledge the sales tax proceeds as payment on that borrowed money. So that caused Bob and I to start, start thinking about what that should look like and what that could look like. In other words, which of our different authorities might be best to borrow money? And, um, we actually came about that in an odd fashion because we were looking at the library trust, indenture. Any of the, uh, trusts, all of the trusts that we've created or that have been created, public trusts, have what's called an indenture. That's the creating document. And for the most part, most public trusts, municipal public trusts are created, with broad powers and the ability to borrow money, do lots and lots of things, and, uh, they also typically will, will give the, will direct almost the trustee, I guess the trustees would be the right word, to appoint a manager or hire a manager. And, um, as you guys probably know, like the Public Works Authority appoint, you guys have appointed Bob as the general manager of Public Works Authority. So he's the city manager, he's the general manager of the Public Works Authority, he's the general manager of the, of PIDA. And I think, I don't remember, I think it's also any, and other ones, I think the Territorial Closet. The library trust indenture is not, was not drafted with borrowing money and being managed by anyone other than the trustees in mind. So it had a very different, it, it reads differently. The auditor, um, expressed some questions to me, which basically she was kind of pointing it out to me that she wasn't sure that, that, that the, the library trust could borrow, could borrow money under the way that it's worded. And I looked at it and was like, yep, that's a good point. So, we're bringing this to your attention now because if you go back and look at the PIDA indenture, it's very broad. It's exactly what we would need to do some of the things that we would want to do, you might want to do, um, as far as borrowing money in the future. So, I think that's the only reason that this was put on the agenda is just to let you know that Rhonda may actually have something to do. And you as well, but we, um, so. I was just commenting that the budget for next year is fairly small for PIDA. That's probably okay for next year, but there may be a real need to, to, uh, to fund it a little differently as we're going forward.
Well, probably two years ago, Bob, Bob and I had a discussion about how he, he had, he had a vision, he just couldn't wrap his brain around it yet, how he wa, how he wanted to use PIDA a lot differently and, and be able to, uh, use this trust to help Perkins grow. And it just, nothing had landed in his lap as, as of that point, as far as ideas. And that's actually one of the, one of the things I had told Renee, I was like, he's got dreams for this, it just doesn't, hasn't been able to corral it just yet. I like the idea. I, I think the idea should be pursued and thought.
Well, and when we, when we pursued the sales tax initiative for the library, the goal was to pass it and then borrow money, like she said, and, and, uh, pledge the sales tax money or towards the loan. Since the library trust isn't legally able to do that, the loan and the, 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 for lack of a better term, the project would be administered by the city through the Perkins Industrial Development Authority, with much input from the, uh, library trust. Nobody would be left out or anything. It's just a legal hurdle. The, the whole reason, the Oklahoma constitution says municipalities can't, um, go into debt. So then they, the lawmakers said, well, okay, we're gonna make this thing called trusts that's gonna be part of the city, and they can go into debt. Well, this one was not written to include that.
The library trust.
Or the library trust. So I actually, I thought all trusts were written to borrow money because that's the number one reason you wanna trust in a municipality. Because there's things that are so expensive, we just can't do them if we can't borrow money. Public works authorities are all trusts, that's why. But when we got into the weeds on it, we realized we can't borrow money from the library trust, and they don't have a manager component. So this seems to make a lot more sense, and I've visited with the boards and everybody's, you know, wanting to get the project done, so. This was kind of a break the ice with you all and the PIDA trust members. That, this is how we would, this is how we envision going forward.
Make one caveat there. The, the project would be managed and, and contracts would be in the name of the city. So he would be managing the project as the city manager. The city owns the building. So, the, it makes sense that it would happen that way. And so, and PIDA would be, really just be the funding source, for the most part.
Keeps it clean.
Yeah, and then you don't end up with another entity involved in the, in the building, ownership management, yada, yada.
So there may be some, maybe some administrative stuff in the PIDA budget. You know, as this proceeds, I don't know the answer to that, but basically, in my vision, it's, there's a loan, and there's a loan payment of X dollars per month or a quarter or annually. And that money would be transferred from a new fund that Rachel's created for just the library sales tax to service the debt.
There may be some fund transfers from PIDA who will receive, if, if, if you all decided that you wanted to do it, who would receive the, um, proceeds from the loan, and that would have to be transferred to the city to pay the bills. So there's gonna be some, even though it's straightforward. That's not.
Do we have a timeline on that?
Um, the library trust, well, it was an agenda item to.
For the, for the regular meeting?
I think.
Yes.
So.
Timeline on which?
On PIDA.
The money or?
I think four to six months, wasn't it, with the architect, something like that?
Sounds right.
Something like that, and then.
Utilizing PIDA to get a, so we oughta, we gotta go through our agenda items on the regular meeting to answer my question.
Well, I'm just not sure where you know yet.
Well, I, I guess the answer to the question is when, once we get an architect on boarded, which may happen tonight, they will go through their process and planning, and they'll develop a budget. And then once we have that budget number, we'll know exactly what we need to shoot for. So four to six months-ish.
Cause she's busting at the seams out here.
Yeah. We just have, we're the governments, we have to do everything very slowly.
But whatever we borrow, we have to pay back over ten years because, I think.
Yeah, the sales tax is a ten year, so.
Sales tax is a ten year.
We're gonna try to structure the note, and I'll send an R F Q out, or R F P to local banks and other banks to see who wants to give us the best deal because it's, when you're pledging sales tax, it's almost a no-risk loan. And I think there might be a local bank or two that wanna be involved with the project that may try to, you know, give us a good deal as part of a community project.
This won't be as straightforward as Pi, as PIDA borrowing money from a bank because of all the municipal regulations. We'll still have bond counsel involved. And you'll still, you'll be signing a bazillion documents when it happens. Cause we'll have to go to it for the, for the, that service, right?
Well, we could get with the F A and bond counsel, just like we.
Yeah. So it'll be, it would be David Floyd. It would be David Floyd. Or someone like him.
So there's no, there's no motion to make here?
No, it's just, uh, letting everybody in on the plan and.
Right. Did you have anything to say?
No, ma'am. That would be a good way to process it if you're able to do it through the library trust. That'd be a perfect idea.
I agree.
I concur.
Concur. Sorry. Okay, item agenda number seven. New business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for the matters not known about, which could have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. I agree. I make a motion to adjourn the Perkins Industrial Development Authority regular meeting Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Right.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Renee?
Rhonda?
Yes.
Ladies for being here.
That's right.
Bye. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Renee. Thanks for your time. Okay, reconvening the, uh, regular meeting for the City of Perkins Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Item agenda number twelve. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to renew agreement with J. Trevor Hemmons, P L L C to provide legal services as the city prosecutor at a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per hour and travel time at seventy-five dollars per hour with extraordinary costs and expenses to be reimbursed to prosecutor. Staff?
Okay, so I'm city attorney, so when they bring, I'm the one who will typically bring outside counsel on to you. We brought Trevor, I think, two years ago. I can't remember if that was, but, um, he has been our, our municipal court prosecutor. I'll just have to tell you about this time this year, about this time last year, I called, uh, actually Tiffany called me, reminded me to do this, and I said, how's he doing? Um, and she feels that, um, it's, it's all going really well. I think our municipal court has good judges, good prosecutor. I have had zero oversight in the last year, which is probably not good, but I think it's such a, a well-run machine at this point that, but I will tell you that last year, when I talked to Trevor, um, as you, as you may remember, you pay him a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And, um, when Trevor started, uh, well, even last year's contract, you were paying him a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, and half of that for, uh, uh, travel time. So I think it was six, or sixty-five, I think it was sixty-five dollars more travel time. And I told him last year, hey, I'm gonna go ask for a raise, I'm gonna ask for you one too. Well, I called him, uh, this year and said, well, I didn't ask for me a raise. And, uh, and he, and I, and he's, I said, but I'm asking for one for you because I, we, we don't want him to go away. We want him to stay and, and do what he's doing, and, and so. I, I'm asking you or recommending that you pay him an additional twenty-five dollars an hour. So rather than one twenty-five, it'd be one fifty an hour. So rather than 125, it'd be 150 an hour and then $75 an hour for travel time, that's what you pay me. And prosecutors, I'll tell you, city attorneys are hard to find, prosecutors are probably harder to find. He comes from Norman to do this for us, so.
So Bob, wasn't he a big help to you with the DEQ as well?
He's a huge, he's a tremendous asset.
Outside of what his city duties were, he went with you.
Yeah, you have a separate outside counsel contract with him.
Yeah, for that, yeah.
He's a tremendous asset for the.
To advise us on DEQ.
Environmental stuff and he's, he does tremendous work in the prosecution role. He's also, you know, acts as a judge in some other jurisdictions. The other thing I wanna mention is, we have probably one of the best court systems municipally in Oklahoma and it's because of our court clerk Tiffany Diarmuid.
Yeah.
Because it is a machine. She is slick.
She is, well, I don't know. I just can't speak to whether she's more detailed or less detailed than Raisel.
More, more.
More, probably.
She lives in the world with all those boxes.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners, you have anything?
I'll make a motion to renew agreement with J. Trevor Hammons PLCC to provide legal services as city prosecutor at a rate of $150 per hour and travel time at $75 per hour with extraordinary costs and expenses to be reimbursed to prosecutor.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Number 13. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement for administration of the sales and use tax ordinances of the city town and an agreement to engage in compliance activities by the city town of Perkins with Oklahoma Tax Commission effective July 1, 2024. Staff report?
This is an updated contract with the Oklahoma Tax Commission because we have the two new sales taxes. Municipalities can elect to collect their own sales tax. Yeah, you're right. And I would recommend that we don't want to do that. Oklahoma Tax Commission collects it, they go after people who are, you know, they track who's late. If there's a new business that opens up that doesn't, isn't remitting their sales tax, they, they contact them. If there's a website that's not charging the proper sales tax, they get, they do all those things for us and we love it. So I would recommend that we approve this. It used to be 3.375%, now it's 3.875%. That's the only thing that's changed is just the amount of the sales tax that they're gonna be collecting on our behalf. And it also matches our use tax as well.
Good. Commissioners, you have any questions or comments?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for administration of sales tax and use tax ordinances of the city town and the agreement to engage in compliance activities by the city town of Perkins with the Oklahoma Tax Commission effective July 1, 2024.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
That's you.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Don't want to have so much fun up here. Number 14. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve purchase of Kubota Zero Turn Mower Model Z 726XKWN-C-60 from Great Plains Stillwater at a cost of $10,813.83 utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
So this mower would be for the wastewater treatment plant, the one that's out there is just totally wore out and a nightmare to try to mow with for the employees. And we chomped around a little bit and believe this is the best deal. The reason it's on the agenda is we wanna use ARPA funds and that requires commission approval. And that is a state contract for us.
Do what now?
The state contract price, it's reduced a little bit.
Yes, yes, I saw that. This, this, this salesperson lives here in Perkins, isn't he?
I'm not sure.
So, um, yes, with everything going on out there at the wastewater plant, we sure don't need to look sloppy.
No.
Commissioners, any, any comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve purchase of the Kubota Zero Turn Mower Model Z 726XKWN-C-60 from Great Plains Stillwater at a cost of $10,813.83 utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act fund.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sorry.
Sarah?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes ma'am.
Second. He's still blue.
Seconding is a lot better than it.
Yes.
Yes.
You think? Okay, sorry. Number 15. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the city of Perkins operating budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Staff report?
I know who's gonna speak, but I was intended for Bob.
Actually, I think it's on me.
Oh, it is. I was, I'm just not gonna direct you to do anything. Cause I'll get the evil eye from.
So I was gonna walk you through the packet, I was gonna walk you through the different sections, then come back and kinda hit the high points and low notes if that plan works for you. Feel free to interrupt me if a question pops into your mind, that's fine with me. So the first page are the different funds and you can see there at the bottom, ten, tax library, and number 12, tax parks and recreation. State law requires totally separate funds for specific reasons and a new sales tax is one of those reasons. And if you'll kinda remember, funds are sort of, if you think of them as buckets of money. So this bucket of money belongs to this group, this bucket of money belongs to that group. And so those two new sales taxes have two new funds. Okay, I'm gonna skip over my budget notes, which are on gold paper, so you can easily find them. The next section, as soon as I can get there, this shows the fund revenue as a percentage of the total proposed budget. If you don't have any questions, we'll go on past it. The next two pages talk about the use of prior year surplus funds that are included in the budget and each of the amounts and why they're there. For example, $5,000 to write off bad debt in general fund. That's where we have billed for something and then when you bill it, it comes in on the budget side as revenue, but it sits out here in this holding pattern waiting for the money to come in. And when we have reached the point where either through collections or time has passed or whatever, we gotta get rid of, well, we showed that it came in over here, but it never really came in as cash. So when we, when you see that writing off bad debt, there's not really any cash coming out of the bank for that. It's, it's fixing it on the revenue side, but cash is not gonna change. So that's one of note. Estimate for the CARES Act remaining funds, that's kind of a ballpark number, it's a little bit more than that, but I'll fix all that July 1, once all the bills come in and I know for sure. We've had $6,465 in Park and Rec Fence Project donations, which are earmarked for the fences at Parks and Rec. And Trent has mentioned that that is the first project that he would like to tackle with the new sales tax, doing fences at both parks. The Main Street Lights, Streetlights Project, it is actually in this year's budget right now, there's a purchase order open, it's sitting there, it shows this prior year carry forward in this year's budget. And then it's again in next year's budget, cause I don't know what's gonna happen between now and June 30th. So that's why you see that there, but you might see it someplace else on fiscal year 24 as well.
We had to carry that forward. What's our range?
Uh huh, uh huh, cause we transferred it, I think, like last April-ish, it was towards the end of the year. So, the Books and Barbecue fundraiser, $5,897. Jennifer had said that's her money to spend, or, or money to spend, however, she needs to spend it for the library, so it's just there. There's $965 from my father-in-law passed and he asked for donations to be made to book programs, so it's there for whenever she wants to use it. Then there's another writing off bad debt and this is strictly for municipal board and the judges and Trevor has spoken with Tiffany and they would like to write off some bad, some bad debt with regards to like citations that are just never gonna be paid and we know they're never gonna be paid, so.
Get rid of them.
So that's another $10,000 that will come off the revenue side, but won't come out of the bank. The $50,000 T-Mobile Grant, you know, we're kinda stalled there until we get the architect plans, so that's being carried over again this year. Then the School Resource Officer and the Police Department Explorers Programs have some little funds there that need to be carried over. And then finally, that last number is the one you're gonna be most interested in, that's the number that we may need to use to make the general fund budget balanced. And we'll talk a little more about that as we go along. And I am, I am comfortable with using that, I feel like we have enough surplus funds that we can afford that number and we hope that we don't need all of it. Then other departments within Fund One, that general government, there's the estimated American Rescue Plan Act funds, the Animal Control Building Fund is just hanging out there until we get enough to build a building. Library has a savings account, that's their money. Municipal Court Juvenile Fines, those are, they are set by statute, specific things that they can be used for and it's kinda tricky to figure out, so it just gets, keeps getting carried over. And then the Police Department Asset Forfeiture, same thing, some specific uses. I actually think that Deputy Keith Dean has used most of that this year, he's, so we'll do a budget amendment in July if we have to do that. So that's Fund One, prior year carry forward, the others are shorter and easier. Fund Two, prior year carry forward, writing off the bad debt for the $5,000 and then $1,000 to make the budget balance. And again, we can talk more about that a little bit later. Capital Improvement, $65,753 for surplus funds to make the budget balanced. And Public Safety, $6,000. And I just wanna note that the $6,000 prior year surplus funds available to use to balance the budget, so that's on the revenue side. On the expense side, we do still plan to set aside $64,000, I think it's $64,219 for that vehicle that we bought this year because we could get two. And so we do plan to set it aside, so you know, $6,000 coming out, but $64,219 going back in on that one.
Still part of the capital permit plan, just a little bit.
Correct, we're just like one, we were just one year ahead.
Right.
Because vehicles were so hard to get, you all, we thought it was a wonderful idea that we'd just buy two now.
Exactly.
Um, Oklahoma Territorial Plaza is not getting, we're not budgeting to use any of their prior year surplus funds, we'll talk about that later. The bond debt, that carryover, it's just, that's a tricky one because it's debt service, so I want everybody to see this is how much we still have in the bank, this is how much is coming in. So yet we budgeted to carry it over and then we turn around and budget it to be reserved. But I, it's easier for, I think, for people to understand how that bond debt service fund works, if you can see that we do have this much money in the bank and that's the way it's supposed to work. We're supposed to collect less bond every year and start chipping away at that, so by the time we get to the very end, it really should be close to zero in there. Library Trust estimating $5,000 to be used. I'm not real sure where we stand with that, so that'll have to be July 1, I'll have to fix that, cause they've got a couple of whole projects hanging out there and I'm not sure, so that's more of a placeholder. Bond construction, we have $3 there and we just keep bond construction, that fund alive, so that if we go, if we want to do another general obligation bond somewhere down the road, that fund is still there, still hanging out. And we made a penny in interest this year, so. For example, the first one, general fund, Oklahoma Territorial Plaza, we're budgeting that we need to, general fund is gonna need to give Territorial Plaza $32,553 because it's not gonna generate enough revenue to pay for its, its expenses. Fund Two, Public Works to General Fund, $250,000, that's because general fund can never make enough money to pay for itself, so Public Works has to help us offset that. Capital Improvement is transferring $10,284 to Public Works. Public Works can take on debt, the city cannot, so it is within legal boundaries that capital improvement funds can be transferred to pay for debt, which makes no sense. So that's what that is. And then if you skip down, nothing for PIDA, nothing for bond debt or library trust or bond construction, now we're at tax library and tax Parks and Rec. And part of what those funds could be used for is personnel and both the library director and the Parks and Rec Director have requested an additional part-time person to help them cause it's just too much. And so we would be transferring those funds from tax library and from tax Parks and Rec to general fund because to do payroll in two more funds is, is complex. So that way, we're still maintaining payroll in the general fund of one, that money is being transferred. Is that okay? I mean, everybody follow that? Okay. Questions? Is it fun? Okay. City of Perkins staffing, that kind of is what it is. I have noted the four positions on there that we have included in the budget, should you choose to, and they are a part-time Oklahoma Territorial Plaza Maintenance Worker, our Shannon, our Animal Control and Plaza Manager is overwhelmed and just needs help. We've got an additional part-time librarian, an additional Parks and Rec Maintenance Worker, and then an additional part-time deputy court clerk. All the new laws that changed last year with cost hearings and, and different types of warrants, anyway, it freed an incredible amount of work. So those are the four part-time positions. Other than that, everything stays the same except the wastewater, the Public Works Director at this time is vacant and we'll be talking about that in a little bit. The next section is American Rescue Plan Act funding, and that's kind of, I mean, unless somebody has a question about it, on the fourth page, funds remaining, we found the mower at a different price and I didn't update that, so it's, it's about $100,000, I think, as of July 1. It has to be encumbered by December 31 of this year and then it has to all be actually spent by December 31, 2026. So we'll be anticipating spending it pretty soon.
Yeah.
On harvest. Next up is a partial capital improvement plan. My apologies because normally this is completed and you've looked at it in March and you know, I've had some family issues and time just did not allow me to get it all done. So Bob's helping with all the department head input, we talked about what everybody needed to do and wants to do. You've got what, what we're trying to accomplish in '24 and then you've got proposed '25. And then if you'll bear with me, we'll have a full capital improvement plan hopefully by August for you to take a look at the whole thing. Questions about that?
We should already have one, you just need to update it, right?
Yeah, you know, and we moved some things around and something comes up and you put something in and scooted it over and it changes the totals and, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot, it takes a long time. It's not like super hard, it just takes a long.
I say just move it around, she doesn't like that.
Yeah, I, I feel like, so, we should have money.
Living, breathing, yeah.
So, Mr. Ernst, would, would you allow Raisel to tab mine for me?
Yes.
Yes, I will tab them all.
It'd be greatly appreciated.
Did it for me.
You're not so special. Okay, the next, the next.
She's a country girl.
Let me get to how many pages.
There, there, there.
I'm so sorry, give me just one sec, cause my page number didn't seem to play nicely. Okay, so the next section is a summary of revenue and expenses and it is a comparison of projected, so this is me working through, thinking how much more are we gonna spend till June 30th versus next year's budget. And I, I'm not gonna talk about this right now unless somebody actually has a question, question, I'm gonna move on past that. The next chunk is the revenue category and the proposed, proposed budget and that shows you line by line what, what was budgeted in '23, what actually came in in '23, that was last year, what was budgeted this year, what has come in as of May 8 this year, and then the proposed budget next year. And then the next chunk, which is the expense category, is exactly the same thing, both Those budgeted and actual for '23, budgeted and actual for '24, and proposed budget. And that way, you can kind of look across. And I know you're going to see some big discrepancies and you may wonder why. I am absolutely happy you can call me, you can email me, you can come see me. I would need to go into accounts and actually look back and say, oh, this broke and it was $20,000 that year, or we had a huge, we had lots of insurance claims, this year it was like $28,000, so that would skew that line a lot. So any, any specific questions you have about account lines, holler at me, I'm happy to try to answer. Next to the last page. It's like this, it says report total. That's just the report total for the expense, to give you kind of an idea of where we stand versus what's budgeted. So if all goes well, and we're looking, it's been 4.4, we've budgeted 6.6. A lot of that's things like those street light projects or other things that we just didn't get done yet this year. Okay. Last page are the expense categories. So you might wonder about these, let me, I'm going to quickly talk about the expense categories that you see in that report. Statute requires in the budget packet that things are brought in by these categories. So it's personal services, which is payroll, materials and supplies, things you can touch, copy paper, rolls, shovels. Other services, city attorney, insurance, capital outlay, those things that are going to last, that go to better the financial health of the city, debt service, loan payments, and then transfers, transfers between the funds. Questions? Do we feel good?
No, I know what copy paper costs, so it's good.
Okay, we can back up to those old sheets. Fiscal Year '25 reflects a 10.73 decrease from '24, and some of that is because our moneys are being expended, the cares moneys are being expended. We had a couple of grant projects that we were finishing this year, the hydro vac and the, something else. What grant we have? Oh, great grant for generators. Yeah, so that's kind of, that's part of those differences. If you want to go to the next page, you'll see just a summary. I just pulled a few things and put them on here because costs are nuts. So utilities from last year to this year have increased 23%. Water testing has increased 104%. I have that right here, yes. Sewer testing is up 14%, the attorney, no offense, but 36% because we're doing a lot of things and we need her.
Well, I mean, we have things out of the ordinary going on.
Yes, very much out of the ordinary.
It also includes some outside counsel that we would.
Yes, sure.
Computer maintenance and repair, 82% because everything requires somebody technical to come fix it. Telephone, 5%. Property liability insurance, 26%. And part of that huge raise is because we bought some new stuff, the hydro vac and the two new generators, for example, the two new police vehicles, the parks and rec truck. So the 26% is because we've added value. It's not, it's about seven and a half, eight percent, just the increase from the company. And then postage, 30% on postage.
But we bought a machine.
We had a new machine and the ink costs, okay, I'm so sorry, I can't remember. From the old machine to the new machine, either machine costs more and the ink costs less, or the machine costs less and the ink costs more. I can't remember.
Machine costs more.
Okay, so the ink costs a little bit less. We're doing, you know, we're doing the full, this is the first full year of the full-size bills. So that, that's also more of an increase. We used to do postcards. Items of note by fund, I'm just going to hit a couple of those. If you want to talk about anything, please stop me. Our, our server is reaching end of life. Interworks, Mark Strach, who is our, our tech, and he's wonderful. I really appreciate everything he does for us. He feels that we really need to replace our server by January of next year, if at all possible. It's a 2016. It's, it's about done. There's $10,000 of CARES Act funds that were earmarked for city hall technology back when everybody decided how, so we would like to put $10,000 of the CARES Act towards that server, and then another $10,000 coming from general and public works funds. One thing that we would like to do and we think it would be a benefit to our citizens is to do a drive-through drop box.
Yes.
Located in the alley at the end. If you know where the dumpster is, down by Onq, one's theirs and one is ours, put it there, put the little cement boopers around it so nobody can drive over it. But we feel like that would help a lot of our people, especially our senior citizens, if it's easier for them to just put it in and drive on. So we'd like to be able to do that.
I want, I want, I'm saying this because I want people to know, but there are, there's one specific person that has a very hard time coming in to pay their bill, and city staff has been known to go get it.
Yes, we have a couple of people that they go out every month and go to them.
I'm, I'm saying that on purpose with no names.
Yeah.
But I think our citizens need to know how much our staff cares.
Yeah.
And I think the drop box is a great idea. My two cents.
The parking lot at the plaza, you know, as we rent it, we want, we want everything to look nice, and the parking lot really needs some help. So part of that big transfer that you saw from general fund to plaza would be to help offset the cost of resealing, repainting and sealing the parking lot, right? Repainting and sealing, okay. About $800 is in the budget. Oklahoma Municipal Management Services is an organization that the city of Perkins belongs to. It's very, very helpful. There's message boards, there's, there's professional services for free that you can ask for. They do these regional luncheons, and as part of the strategic plan, doing some new networking and trying to make some new connections was part of the strategic plan. So at this time, we are booked to have, to host a luncheon in July for folks to come and see what we're doing here in '17. One moment, please. I'm sorry, I, I don't see it on the 17, but that doesn't mean that's what I talked about.
I just wanted all this, reminded of it where it is so we can set it aside.
I may have forgotten to put it on the calendar, but I know we did choose a date.
No, I think it's the 30th.
Oh, is it the 30th?
Yeah. It was going to be earlier in the month and then you requested to have it changed.
Somebody do come.
July.
Now, the 30th is a special meeting, a city commission meeting, that's going to be.
The 10th.
The 10th, she said, hold on.
That's charm.
City Commission training?
There it is, Perkins hosting OMMs, yes. Wednesday, July 10, 12 o'clock, Vassar Center.
So tell Bob to not make fun of my hard copy. Sure, man.
Okay, I think everything else, an animal control vehicle, she needs something there. The residential commercial building inspector, we have his agreement in this month. Okay, so he's asking for a raise, and my goodness, does he do a wonderful job. Increasing library materials purchases at the librarian's request. You'll see some increased revenue because Trent is kicking it on concession stands.
Yes.
People in town are really pitching in and helping because he could not do that alone. He, they are, so that's been wonderful. Lots and lots of signup fees, lots and lots of children participating. The fire department software platform that they have to use to report tripled in price, and there's like two or three vendors that offer it, and they all have matching prices, basically. So that was a lot. We already talked about that. So I'm going to skip down to Fund Two. The elimination of the public works director position, which is about $87,000, so that those funds can be put towards an incremental factor to help with the management of the wastewater treatment plant, that's just of note. Continue rental of the shop building. I have included the legal services for Collins, Zorn and Wagner for the water meter thing. And then increased water and sewer rates, which we can talk about later on. Then you'll see in capital improvement, $10,000 budgeted to be set aside for the water meters. When we got the loan from Oklahoma Water Resource Board, that was one of the requirements within the loan that we do that. So I feel like as long as those meters are in the ground, we need to comply with, with pride lines from that loan. So we're setting that aside. And then again, we already talked about the police vehicle. Talked about Fund Five, talked about Fund Six, Seven, Eight, I talked about that already. Ten, sorry, I'm on, I'm, items of note in Fund Ten. Everybody okay? As I was skipping, I'm sorry. Income from the new sales tax will start to be collected as of July 1, but Oklahoma Tax Commission remits two months later. So they collect in July, it's, it's paid, the sales tax is paid by us at wherever we are in July. Then those companies, businesses pay the sales tax to the tax commission in August, and then the tax commission pays us in September. So that first year of the sales tax, we're only going to get 10 months. Now, once the sales tax ends, we'll get two more months after because we'll be running behind. So that's why you see, when we kept talking about, you know, approximately $100,000 a year, that's why you see only like 80-something thousand dollars budgeted. I've got a few nominal amounts in both Fund Ten and Fund Twelve, because if they, if, if Parks and Rec or the library needs $100 here or $50 there, it's, I don't, I don't want to waste your time by coming to you to do a budget amendment so you can agree that Jennifer has $24.95 of this line that she can spend. So I put some nominal amounts there in case she needs something. Wages, we have included a 5% increase in salary. We continue right now, knock wood, our staff, and we are fully staffed, and everything's okay. And then, you know, next week, something will happen and we'll have to start looking. So qualifying, qualifying candidates, it's difficult. I've talked to many people across the state, and I have friends across the country, and they're all facing the same thing. It's really hard, and people are jumping ship as quick as they can make 25 cents more an hour, they're gone. So that's why we have a 5% increase. We do have longevity pay included again, that's paid at $100 per year of service for full-time staff members, $25 per year of service for part-time staff members. The FOP, we've got the step increases. Already talked about the four new positions. So I'm going to go to the next page. Tax information, sales tax revenue, we budgeted at 5% over this year's budget. Feeling a little hmm about that. Everybody needs to sit, I'm on TV. Everybody needs to shop locally, locally, because our budget, I mean, our numbers right now are not quite hitting budget. So we'll see how that pans out. On the good side, use tax is way up, so I guess even if people aren't shopping locally, they're, it's coming here, so that's great. So I budgeted that at a 16% increase over last year's actual, and only 4% over this year's receipts.
I have a, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I have a quick. Are, the alcohol tax? Where, where does that go?
What, do you mean, where does it go? Into general fund?
It comes into our, our sales tax, it just comes straight into, separate it out?
It's separated out.
Separated out.
So I can see how much is tobacco. Those two go, alcohol and tobacco go into our, to our, just our general fund, our admin pile. Motor vehicle and gasoline go into the, it's still in general fund, but it goes into the streets department.
Streets department. I, I've seen it and I just was like, wanted to make sure that I had it straight in my brain.
Yeah. To help people shop more locally, I don't know if I should tell them to smoke and drink more, I'm not sure. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Free rides if anybody needs them.
So when you see a commissioner anywhere, buying something, be like, they're just helping out, our city.
Just helping out.
There's some event that's going to happen soon, I know it.
Franchise fees are those taxes that are attached to utilities with whom we have franchise agreements. OGN E increased 16% in '23, 18% this year. I know, I'm, I'm just, I'm assuming that it's because of all the new construction. I think the new construction is slowing down maybe just a pinch, but that's great news that we're getting more money there. ONG is pretty flat. I guesstimated as to why, I don't really know. SuttonLink has decreased 20, 21% over the past four years, and it's due to, it's, SuttonLink is linked to cable. So I'm assuming as people are transitioning to more streaming services and fewer cables on the ground, that's why that is. AT&amp;T remains steady, you know, that whopping $235, and that one is attached to landlines, not cell phones.
Okay.
So. We talked about computer maintenance and repair. We don't have an employee to handle IT tasks. As everything moves more and more to technology, we just rely more and more on our, our contracted person who is Interworks. CARES Act funding, we've talked about. Testing and chemicals, we've talked about. Fuel and utilities, we've talked about. I have included 10% for utility costs in this budget, and then, I don't know who's seen their mail today, has everybody seen their OGN E letter? That OGN E is increasing 13.85% next year. So, that going forward.
It says double sided.
But I mean, I'm sure they're facing just exactly what we're facing. Everything costs more. And then I have also included a 10% increase on fuel because during an election year, things can get a little volatile and you never know what's going to happen. So hopefully it doesn't go up that much. Public Works training has been increased because we would like for them to get some more training and attend some conferences and do some networking. Health insurance, we've already talked about at the special meeting, and we signed all the paperwork, we were on A1, and all the changes that anybody wanted to make happened today. So that's all a done deal. And Jim Valetta at Gallagher is an incredible resource to us and works really hard on our behalf, and he's, I mean, he gives his cellphone out to our employees so they can call him. Sewer and water rates, I'm going to pause and ask the city attorney a question. So even though this is mentioned in the budget, can I talk about sewer and water rates? So over the last three years, expenses have significantly increased. In your budget that you're looking at, I have included, we have Bob and I working together, a 10% increase, which still leaves us a little bit short of having to use some more money in savings. So we can talk more about, I've got some paperwork that we can look at at the public works meeting. Solid waste, 1.4% for damage retention, that's contractual, that's been included. We talked about prior year surplus already. And then there are the general fund is 26% of the total fiscal year '25 budget, public works is 17%. This is their, I'm sorry, this is surplus funds. I skipped a paragraph, I apologize. I'm talking right now about surplus funds that are still in the bank, even if we use the prior year carry forward, all of it this year, I don't think we're going to use, and all of it next year, which I don't think we're going to use. But that would still leave us in the bank, 26% of the total fiscal year '25 budget, or $662,000. Seven, for public works, 17%, $338,000. Capital improvement, 90% of the total budget, $663,000. And then public safety, 72% of the total budget, or $127,000. Any may have any questions? That's, that's it? That's all? I was thinking the same.
Did brain hurt? I even highlighted stuff.
I'll keep adding reasons. You'll keep adding reasons to have.
There's always a reason to have.
Do you need a reason?
No.
Okay. Rachel, thank you.
You're welcome.
After the meal. Be great.
Thanks.
Okay, we are going to jump over to item agenda number 20. Okay. Public hearing regarding the site plan for the Iowa Tribe Development on tract of land. Is that the one?
Twenty-two is the planned unit development.
Okay, that's just one, sorry.
The property owners are here, and I neglected to point that out earlier.
I think get your.
I don't know if they want, isn't that twenty-two?
Yes.
Planned unit development, twenty-two.
That's twenty-two.
XX11, that's the one I'm looking at. Twenty-two.
There we go. Moving, checking forward to twenty-two. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve or deny amended planned unit development located at 1,000 North Lovers Lane as presented by Ghost and Associates. What? In front of my pen? Oh my gosh, a panic attack over here.
It doesn't look like Ghost was able to make it. This is, the property owners are here.
Okay.
If, if I may approach, is, is this on the back end?
Approach the, it's not. Yeah, come on up.
You have a tiny, tiny one.
They have big ones too.
Okay, so if you want to approach the podium, basically what he's wanting to do, and correct me if I'm wrong, is take out a structure.
Will you, will you give us your name and address real quick for the record, and then?
Sure.
Tell us what you got.
David Punnet. I'm at 4729 East 98th Street, also Oklahoma. The project we have, the 1010 Lovers Lane, we had an island. And we had duplexes circling it in an island. And in that island, we were going to put four smaller duplexes, but I've decided it'll make it look nicer. So we're taking out one of the duplexes, put a pavilion in. So people who are leasing, they have a place to go. It's going to be a 10 by 20 covered pavilion. And also, so, and also, we're providing a little extra parking off the street. Because I'm going to keep the streets clear of cars. So we're providing a little extra parking for family, whatever, visitors.
Is that going to be where the, the cement thing is put up? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Cement thing.
Barrier, the cement barrier?
Cement barrier, I don't, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but we have one for water retention.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have that.
So what's going to go in front of that, just grass?
Water retention strictly for water runoff. As far as our DEQ qualification. So that's what we're.
So right there in the middle is where you, you're, what you're.
Right toward the back of the middle. See where Lovers Lane is. So we have room, we may or may not put the extra duplexes there. It's going to look so much nice around it, and then putting that pavilion there, we're going to make a decision when we get to that point. But I did want to add that pavilion and extra parking.
Hey Bob, could I see the? Oh, wait, there was one up here, sorry.
I apologize for not bringing you all up earlier. I neglect, I'm sure you wanted to listen to the riveting budget talk.
Are you wanting, you're not wanting to add? Can you come back up, David?
Sure.
When you're adding parking, you're adding parking in the area of the pavilion, correct?
It's on each side of the pavilion toward the end, yes.
Not in the.
Off the street.
In the center will still be homes.
Yes.
Okay, got you, I see that.
Yeah, these are the parking.
So converting one lot that was designated for a duplex to a pavilion and additional parking.
So that's all we're trying to change is take out that duplex and put.
He wants to take, to have a community. Staff would recommend it.
Did she have to say?
Yep.
She was going to say.
I just said, saying that the driveways as part of the, that you see on the drawings, they were already there for the duplex. We will just add to those.
In other words, there was a driveway for the duplex on the end, we're changing into parking spaces.
You were going to, the duplex was going to be long way.
Yes, it was going to be one at each end, so we're taking that out, put parking space to where we already had a concrete.
So there'll still be three, three, three?
Yes, that's correct, three on each side.
That'll alleviate parking on your little cul-de-sac type thing.
We, we have strict, we have strict restrictions on parking in the street. Not a little bit during the day, but not overnight.
That'd be nice.
Pretty generous, really, because that's.
It's amazing how much you can see. Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
I think it's a great idea.
I do too. Going to be nice.
I like the forethought on the parking. And thinking about community, that's good as well. Bob, you said staff approved?
Staff approves and recommends.
Okay.
Just so you know, we're putting some columns along Lovers Lane with some rail fencing. I mean, when we get finished with everything, I think you'll be quite pleased.
They're very nice.
And Bob's agreed to work with. Thank you.
That's not always true, but, but most of the time.
Are we asking Tammy or?
Yeah. Did you stick off our hat mic?
Or forgive me?
I'll make a motion to approve the planned unit development located at 1,000 North Lovers Lane as presented by Ghost and Associates.
I'll second that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor? Sarah?
Yes, Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see if we could take a real quick, brief, what?
That's good.
She's, or something. Quick break, quick, is that good?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks for making the drive, thank you very much.
No problem at all. Take care.
All right, you too. All right, sounds good, a second.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, we want to say, per not accepted.
Yes, I'm so sorry, yes, she'll.
You what? Are you on break? Yes.
Good. I got a question. I think probably too.
You're probably going to have to.
You're right. Maybe you see a greenish, no, it's not. What are you going to have her? We do have the mayor's sign on this.
We have this. Oh, wait, hold on, let me think.
So we say, so. Before we approve it, the owner of the engineering team has signed it. It should have been done before everyone's. The owner. It might need the. Mr. Punnet? Mr. Punnet?
Just, so. The apartments there, except in Lovers Lane.
You can come up here, I think they probably just want you to.
William? Yeah, do you mind, here, let me ask you one question. Does it say on here who the owner is? Okay, premier real estate leasing company. That's the.
The company that's building.
Okay, can you, then you're the managing member? And then can you go ahead and sign, read, read that if you want, but that should have happened first. Didn't want to watch basketball in 91 hours. I was supposed to be. I hired from last night.
You don't.
I have to date it today. But we're going to talk to you here. But yes.
We're still on, we're still being recorded. Cockle Bell.
The city doesn't own land. So city doesn't, oh, he can come. Can't tell.
He needs to come in and sign it before we initiate. And then you can also, we also wanted to, I also wanted to tell you that I'm going to take this up.
This one.
Well, I said, I said it.
Work to approve. And that was the motion, and we're not accepting any infrastructure.
You don't, you know, you, you don't know until.
It's private.
That's correct.
Hey, that's what I was asking, that we're no one there.
Okay.
That's okay.
So does Stephen need to come here to?
Yeah. Sign the certificate.
Get all his points.
I'm going to go ahead and have them sign it tonight, but they know not to.
So what's your?
Thank you. Thanks for, I caught you.
Okay, I just didn't get it right.
One more thing. Straight under your member, will you?
You want to put managing member or just member?
Member's fine. I mean, if you want to manage a league, yeah. Has to be a member. Yeah. I'm going to let you leave now.
Okay.
Yeah, I am. Looked at that sooner, I'm sorry.
Tammy, you ready?
We'll get better. When they are. Thank you for that break.
Well, you were involved, and I needed to prepare something real quick.
Thank you, Justin.
You're asking him a question. I seriously feel like I've been at a little sleepover all night, and I.
You can be with Mel's course.
I'm tired of hearing.
At a reconvene, the city commission meeting for May 14th, 2024. We're going to go back to item agenda number 16. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve contract with Corbin Mertz and Haney for architectural and interior design services on the new Perkins Public Library, 219 South Main Street at a cost of $75,500 plus reimbursement expenses as stipulated as recommended by Library Trust.
So the Library Trust went through the procurement process and received several quotes, and they scored the quotes.
Request for proposal.
Request for proposal, and they scored the proposals. And this is, this, Corbin Mertz and Haney came out on top. So they would want to contract with the, sign an agreement with that firm to do the architectural and interior design service on the new public library. This is on your agenda versus the Library Trust agenda because of the same reasons we talked to before. When the trust was formed, they're not legally able to enter into contracts.
Well, they can enter into contracts, they just can't borrow money.
So.
Sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
This is on this agenda because it's, because of our overall concept of it's a city-owned building, it's going to be city-financed, and we need to start today connecting all this project. Because this, this architect may be doing additional services throughout the, the time that this building's being built. We don't want to have our architect have a contract with one entity, and our construction, construction company have a contract with another entity. So we're, that, that, my recommendation was, let's go ahead and get this whole project in the name of, of the city. And that, I explained that, I think.
That's.
Actually, I explained to the.
That's where it should be according to our, our handler. So, yeah, I get that. I do like it that they went through and filtered it all out.
Well, and I'll just make, say also, the reason I corrected him on quotes is because when you're hiring a professional, certain types of professionals, attorneys, engineers, architects, you are not supposed to get quotes, you're not supposed to consider the lowest bidder. It's a little backwards from the way we think about everything else, but you want the person who's going to design the bridge that doesn't collapse, and that may not be the person who charges the least.
But I'd like to throw in the caveat, the infinite wisdom, the legislature's comprised of mostly attorneys. So we pay them the most and then hire the cheapest contractor.
Talk about my hourly rate one more time.
You put that on the next agenda.
Anyway.
All agreements should be done the way professional services are, in my opinion.
Commissioners?
Yeah, because of problems.
So commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
The money is coming from the Library Trust.
That was one of the budget amendments.
Friends of the library and Library Trust have transferred the money to the city to fund this.
And they all approve of this one, this is the one they recommend.
It's the one they want, in fact, Eric's here, librarian, Ms. Hudson is here.
Say anything? Let's do it.
Okay. Let's do it.
I like it.
And one of the budget amendments that you approved is to do that transfer.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Corbin Mertz and Haney for architectural and interior design services on the new Perkins Public Library, 219 South Main Street at a cost of $73,500 plus reimbursable expenses as stipulated as.
A second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes, Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Seventeen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to adopt the City of Perkins 10-year strategic plan.
This is the plan we've worked on for a long, long time. And the next order of action is adopting it, and then working on getting the different items completed.
Yes.
I mean, we could speak for hours about it, but we've spoken for hours.
Do it.
I make a motion that we adopt the City of Perkins 10-year strategic plan.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes, Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Number 18, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve contract with MeShak and Associates for engineering services for Kinder Wells 9 drainage issue at a cost of $6,920.
As everybody knows, there's a drainage issue in Kinder Wells Section 9, which is the area directly south of Williams, the horseshoe, and then kind of all wrapped around the fourth street. The developer has submitted a plan to remedy that. And so we are wishing to hire MeShak and Associates. One of their, they have a lot of strong suits, but one of their strongest suits is drainage. So this is the proposal they gave to review that and respond to the developer's engineer.
So we're paying for that and not the engineer while we're, could get back?
Okay, this is. The developer's engineer, who could potentially be liable for the, the situation as it stands, has, has taken on the work of proposing a fix. We're taking, this, this contract would take the fix to MeShak for review because we want someone else to review that proposed fix. It's still considerably less payment to MeShak to review one than if we had just hired them to develop the plan. To answer your question, I, I think is, can we get these funds back from the developer? Yes, we, we should be able to, we have a guarantee from, from the developer. There's potentially, we won't, and we'll talk about this in, in executive session if need be, but there's potentially other parties that could be liable for what happened here. But hopefully, the developer and the. But hopefully, the developer and the engineer will work together to fix it so that your costs are minimal, that is the goal.
And I believe it's in our resolution to do, uh, engineering reviews back to the developer. We have a resolution that states that. Now, I don't know if that one.
We'll look at that.
Engineering plan reviews are developed, are billed back.
I do agree with that.
So that might fall under that where we could just send a bill to the developer.
Excuse me, ma'am, can I ask a question? No, I said, can I ask a question? I thought you was gonna talk, say something. Can I clarify something on just my own curiosity? Didn't, haven't we already paid Meachack for the first time in order to see if there was a problem, correct? And this is the looking at it at the resolution of the fix that has been proposed, is that correct? Thank you.
We paid them to determine if there was a problem, that was, what did we pay them for that? Like four thousand?
I was thinking forty-five, something like that.
Something like that.
We paid them, like, yeah, it was like thirty-eight.
No, actually, this is a contract, let's get to that contract.
I slept since then.
This is task two.
Yeah, this is task two. What I thought.
And they, task one was the four thousand, this was task two. Well, we ended up with a little, the little agreement that this is, doesn't really specify, doesn't give you that history, but yes, we ended up paying them four thousand to say, yep, there's a problem, essentially.
Exactly.
They quoted forty thousand to develop the fix, so hopefully, and then developer's engineer proposed a fix, this is task two, or an amendment to that first.
So yes, I believe you're correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good point, I forgot about that. We meant to do both of these things eventually.
Send myself an email.
Has there been pushback from the developer not wanting to work there? Not the way you said it, it didn't sound like.
Okay.
They haven't asked for money yet.
There will be.
They haven't asked for money yet.
But all in all, it will be fixed.
Yep, one way or the other. Good. Keep on the mission.
Who she looks at?
What? That's right, I said, camera. Subie. Look, I am mayor and I'm not making a decision until I know what I'm doing.
Four thousand the first time.
Okay. Find it?
We're close.
What month was that?
On C one. Of that Meachack. Attachment C. Month was that? Yeah. Here. That was signed on June thirtieth of twenty-three.
It's a few months off.
It was what?
June thirtieth of last year.
It was four thousand?
There it was.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, it's in the agreement here on C one.
Yeah, I just wanted to find that. Okay. Commissioners, anything?
I make a motion to approve contract with Meachack and Associates for engineering services for Kinder Wells nine drainage issues at a cost of six thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Nineteen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to select May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four as the date for a special meeting for combined training scheduled for the city commission, planning commission, and board of adjustment regarding the comprehensive plan zoning and subdivision regulations. Staff report, everybody on board?
I can be sure that's still gonna work. It is. Yeah, I think this is a date that was previously selected or something.
Okay.
I will not be here for that meeting.
You're out of town, are you?
I will be in Dallas from the twentieth and, what time, six o'clock? I could possibly be back by then. I'm traveling back the afternoon of the twenty-third.
From Dallas?
Uh, conference is over at twelve-thirty.
Yeah, this, this was the date most people between the three boards were able to.
That is hard to get three boards together. Amy.
I forgive you.
I don't have a calendar, I believe, I think that's the day.
Might not be able to talk, but I can be here.
When was this decided?
She's having neck surgery, she might not email.
I'm having surgery on my spine.
Oh, my gosh.
What?
When? The one where I said the knee date will work?
Yeah. What date?
The twentieth.
Yes, she.
How the hotel knows. Jeez.
Oh, you the bionic woman.
I think it's probably best to push this off, and as much as Amy loves to send emails, she can send everybody more emails.
I don't mind being here.
You're not gonna feel like being here.
Shh, I gotta pass mail.
He had a surgery, my wife did.
I've had three of them. I've had three back surgeries. I just had a myelogram, that's enough.
I can be here.
Feel like it.
I already have a ride.
Of course she can be a lot of fun.
No, you will be dismissed.
Are you, and Dennis ganging up on me? Amy says she can come get me.
No, this doesn't.
Oh, no. Our city, let's not do that.
Are you fucking with us? I don't plan on all that. Yeah.
Our city.
Has to do with that, it's not.
For our city, we don't want a commissioner driving back from Dallas so fast.
I technically will not be driving. Our therapist will be. Want to try it or not?
I would recommend, since the mayor's probably gonna be out, Commissioner Dickerson's probably gonna be out. I don't know that we would have a quorum with the city commission, so I would recommend pushing it off.
Well, I was just gonna say I'll be here.
I understand, thank you. You might be under the influence. I didn't mean that the way it came out. So we're clear.
Took it that way. I was a little scared for a little bit.
You just set a good example for the citizens of Perkins, please, and not encouraged to go places where you may or may not be under an influence.
I've, I've.
Here's, here's another option, and I'm just throwing this out. If you didn't have a quorum, the two people who are here, let's say there were two, two here, and not three, could have a seat in the back and watch and participate and ask questions, uh, because there's no quorum, and it's just a training, there's no decisions that are going to be made. Or we might do it July, if you think that, that, and maybe by July we'll have, we should have a fifth person, so that, I'm glad, I'm glad to do it.
It would be great training for the new person.
That's true. So we want.
And I know you'd be here, but I think you'll be under the influence of.
It would be good for you to actually be mentally and physically here.
You what?
It would be good for you to actually be mentally and physically here.
City attorney has spoken.
Strongest I'll take is Tyler Albron.
I know, but still.
We'll see.
Let's change topics here. Right along?
They're not setting a date, we'll come up with something else.
It should be done traveling after this one, no action.
No action. Number twenty, public hearing regarding the site plan for the Iowa tribe development on attractive land located on the south side of one hundred sixteenth street, highway thirty-three, approximately a quarter mile west of Main Street.
You have your script, I forgot to bring it to you.
What?
I sent you a new one.
Can we just close the public?
Just remember, there's no motion to open.
Right.
That's all I can do, it's wrong on that.
So we're opening it up for a public hearing?
Oh.
Anybody have anything to say? Public comments?
Yes, ma'am. I do have one question.
Come up to the podium.
Oh, you're gonna make me get up.
Uh, tell us your name and address.
Rhonda Jolliffe, one sixteen South Timberline. Um, I read bits and pieces in the paper and this and that. It will be an open, community-based, um.
Clinic?
Clinic.
Yes.
In childcare?
Yes. That was my concern, I mean, I loved the Iowa tribe, they're, they've been, they've been good. I just wanted to double check because, you know, some tribes are like, no.
No, just like their clinic is now.
I, I haven't been out there, but that was my, my, my question, if it was going to be. Who'll be?
Just like there is now.
Okay, I had, oh, he said I hadn't been to that one, so.
That's what they're telling us.
Yeah.
He'll be in thumbs up, I'm down.
Thank you, Rhonda.
If there's, do we need?
We need to close the public hearing?
Hearing and go to the next agenda for me to talk about the site plan?
No, you can, it's usually a staff, for staff discussion is during the public hearing.
Okay, so if you go to sheet C three hundred, sheet?
C. I'd get there yet.
So sheet C three hundred is an overall site plan of the side of this.
Amy, we make a note, please, there you go. Okay, go ahead.
Well, uh, this has been approved by the planning commission and recommend, recommended for approval by the city commission. Um, the highway is on the left side of the, the document? No, wait, highway's on the right side, so when you.
Okay, yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, so it has the three buildings in it, the clinic, um, the childcare center, and then at the rear, here's the highway, at the rear is the proposed DOJ building. Parking is adequate, landscaping is adequate, they have some landscaping.
They've already named this street.
The street is Chief No Heart Street.
Chief No Heart Loop and all that.
And then the next page, C, C three oh one is more of a, a close-up of the, of the, uh, rear parts of the, for the southernmost part of the development.
That's for this, it's set up here.
The North Arrow's not current, that's what was throwing me off, the North Arrow should be, uh, so at the, you can see the parking, um, different, they have all the handicap required spaces, um, land, there's a separate landscaping plan, so we're gonna have a cultural area, um, by the, by the clinic, between the clinic and childcare center, and they're gonna detain the stormwater. I have been working very closely with the Iowa tribe and this, uh, this firm, the architect firm, and I am very impressed with them, it's very professional.
I got to see the color.
I have no, yeah.
Those are amazing.
But as you paint through there, you can get deeper in-depth in the landscaping and grading and, um, there's gonna be a groundbreaking on Thursday.
The second building is on that grid.
The biggest, the largest building is the clinic, which is nearest the highway, that was now. Childcare center shown in front, clinic in the middle, the DOJ building, which is like a justice building. Yeah, that's cool.
There, uh, Chief, what was it?
No Heart.
That is a private street.
Private street.
On their, on their streets.
Good.
Is here on the back side, Bob, is it just land or is it that, uh, that road over by?
No, that's land, that's, uh, halfway between Freeman and here.
Okay.
Yeah, Freeman and here, that's halfway.
And it will connect.
So it's three hundred and thirty feet wide and a quarter mile deep, and it's a half a mile of Freeman. So the original plan or thought was to continue the road straight through Freeman. Budget, and they've had some budget issues with that, so they're gonna stop the road in the back, which is why it's shown as a, there's a loop to be made. So there's two ways in and out.
Entry and exit.
Yeah.
I like it, sorry. I almost said sorry. I do like the, I like how they did go ahead and do that loop part, there's a little pit for traffic.
Yeah.
I took this copy over, sorry, Sarah.
Miles Architecture specializes in a lot of medical facility stuff, lots of government work.
They really have put in the research.
I don't know, that's funny, now it's not. I don't know, maybe a quarter of that, that's thirty thousand square feet.
This is water tower right here, right?
Yes.
Which will be right next to thirty-three.
The water tower's tendibly shown, um, right next to, it'll be next to thirty-three, um, and the lift station will be back here in the back somewhere, we're not a hundred percent sure, like, it'll be in that ex, exact spot yet because we're waiting on an agreement and geotech and stuff like that to determine.
Where's their outdoor arena located?
That would be like here.
Okay, alright.
Not the one by the casino, but the other one, right?
Right. The one by the casino would be like here. The roundup club. I think they're gonna absorb it with, uh, mental health and some other services.
I don't, I don't know that they'll have room for, to expand the wellness center, I think they got, they're getting health, health services, and they're doing an amazing job there.
That's great.
Looks cool, doesn't it?
That's great.
Well, in your, in your opinion, as the city planner, it complies with all the code requirements?
Yes, in my opinion, it complies with all the code requirements, and they have been Miles Architectures and wonderful work.
Will you be there Thursday?
Planning on it. Ninety-five percent chance of rain, I think.
It's not like you're gonna melt, Bob.
Well, that's on TV.
I mean, I'll just hit the top and go right off.
Vice Mayor doesn't need to talk, I know, thank you.
I'll be quiet.
Yeah, I, I just.
Well, she showed it to me in color, and I was like, oh, yeah.
They're doing a lot of neat things with the building, it's gonna be, I mean, they're still working through some of the fine details of the structure, but nothing, I mean, the site is.
I just, I just happened to be in the building.
Yeah, no, it's beautiful.
And Angela was downstairs and she said, come here, I'll show you something, and I mean, bless her heart, she had like office furniture books and just every, she was just.
And Angela's been wonderful.
She's wonderful.
Fantastic.
Big asset for our community.
Everybody's been good on the project, really, it's been, it's been a nice project to work with.
So, uh.
Close the public.
Close the public hearing? And move on to item agenda number 21. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the site plan for the Iowa tribe development on attractive land located on south side of 116th Street, Highway 33, approximately a quarter mile west of Main Street.
Staff recommends approval.
Commissioners, anything? I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan for the Iowa tribe development on attractive land located on south side of 116th Street, Highway 33, approximately a quarter mile west of Main Street.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Jumping over to 23. Consideration and discussion of possible action regarding nominations for an out-large trustee for Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund.
So this is our pension plan, and if anybody would be interested in being nominated to run for board, this is the time that you would do that.
So we can nominate, Bob?
Yeah, he would rather not.
So Amy?
Schedule's full, sorry.
So I can nominate a fellow, I can nominate a fellow mayor of Oklahoma?
I don't think so. I don't think we have any jurisdiction over them.
I have a few in mind right now that I dearly respect. Commissioners, anybody at this time that you'd like to recommend? Okay, so we'll have a pass on that. Move on to 24. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to select and submit one or two candidates for open positions on the board of trustees of the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group.
This was, I think, last month when you could have nominated somebody. Now you are going to vote. So you've got your list of candidates. Mike Bailey from Burlesville sent a letter, so we included that in the packet. May or may know somebody there. I, I don't recognize any names myself.
Honestly. Only one I've met is Craig Stevenson from Ponca City. I met him at the mayor's ball. I feel for Mike Bailey right now as the city manager of Barzville. So, do we, do we vote or do we?
You can select candidates and you can vote, or you can, you can choose one, you can choose two, you can choose not to vote at all.
It's really hard to, this is one way we're making those relationships and reaching out would be beneficial. I have a handful, just not enough right now.
So maybe at the OMMs thing this summer?
Yeah, I think so. I'm gonna get, I'll be signed up for that. Are you gonna go? Okay. Oh yeah, you are, sorry. Hopefully we'll have a walk come. Commissioners, would you like to nominate, not nominate, vote for anyone? I'd like to vote for both of the incumbents, Mike Bailey, city manager for Barzville, and Craig Stevenson, city manager of Ponca City.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
I just feel like it's time to quit passing on some of that stuff. So. Number 25, consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidates for Ward III city commission seat term ending April 30th, 2027.
And we have a letter and it's in your packet.
We have a letter and she's here tonight. And she's waited two plus hours.
She's still here.
She's still here.
There's a lot, it's right there.
That was a test.
Veronica, would you like to say anything or to the commission?
I will.
Say your name. She knows.
Monica Heisler. I live at 215 Southeast Burke Street. Hit it with a softball if I can over here. Not that far. Any questions before?
I will say that I called Veronica and I asked her if she had any questions. And I also called three people, I personally know three people on her reference list, and I called three people, not necessarily the three that I know, and they all gave really good reports. Encouragement about you, ma'am. And.
A couple of them.
The handful that I talked to have known her for 10, 12 years each, so. One of the people on her list is our, one of our former, she's. Up here, what is? Still here.
Helped me when I moved in.
He did?
Yeah, I had to have a mailbox put in. Well, 'cause I had lived, when I first moved to Perkins, I lived in the apartment, so I didn't have to worry about a mailbox. But I got sick of being told what we could and couldn't do and not being able to mow grass. Ironically, I like to mow, so I have a house just right over there with me and my mom and now my dog.
We're getting a new compo, do you wanna?
Yeah, no. No, minus push, it gives me enough exercise that my knees don't hurt, so I just gotta space it out when I do it, not do what I did on Friday. Don't do it all at once.
So do you have any questions about us, ma'am?
I do not.
Vice Mayor, commissars, do you have any questions for Ms. Heisler?
I do not.
Think someone who's willing to step up and serve says a lot.
It does.
I don't really like living down here. I mean, I still work in Stillwater, I still go to church in Stillwater, but if I don't have to go to Stillwater, I'd much rather just stay down here. Traffic-wise, people-wise, I mean, I try to go to as many of the local businesses that I can. So.
Moving on to. We don't need to make a motion on 25?
That's right.
Number 26. Well, thank you, Veronica. Coming up, standing up and writing a letter and everything else. Commissioners, you have anything to say? Okay, moving on to 26. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to appoint the candidate selected in item 25 to Ward III city commission seat term ending April 30th, 2027.
I'll make a motion to approve Veronica Heisler as the Ward III commissioner, term ending April 30th, 2027. I'll second.
Hold on.
What?
I, I apologize, I didn't catch that. Yeah, that should say 2025.
It's yearly, right?
She would have to, because of the vacancy, she's, she's filling a vacancy, she has, would have to run for, or someone.
At the next.
Has to be brought in up at the next election, so I apologize for that.
So can we?
Do you, yeah, we, if, who, who, I'm sorry, whose motion was it? Should we start over?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can say 2020.
Motion, I'll make a new motion to select Russ Heisler as the Ward III commissioner, term ending April 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
Yes, Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, number 27, new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda.
Staff has nothing.
Everybody. 28, I make a motion that we adjourn the City of Perkins regular meeting Tuesday, May 14th, 2024.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Amy, you ready for public works?
Just almost. Yes.
Call it, or do this, call it, establish a form, please.
Mayor?
Here.
Vice Mayor? Sarah? Yes, Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Number two, consideration, action on consent agenda. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Number five. Public appearances, I'm sorry. Number four. Public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances under Oklahoma law, Perkins Public Works Authority Board members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Number five. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the Perkins Public Works Authority operating budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
I kinda covered that already, so unless anybody has a specific question, 'cause the next one. Oh, wait, no, 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 hold on. It's true. Unless anybody has a specific question, because we're gonna talk about utility rates later on.
You don't wanna go through it all again?
I, I could, but we're really gonna have.
I'm totally teasing.
Here, Mitch, right here. Not making any more of that. I have field day tomorrow, guys. Number six. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement with Wright Water Corporation in an amount not to exceed $15,000 to operate the wastewater treatment plant for 60 days, subject to negotiation and approval of acceptable contract by city attorney. Staff report?
This is a, this is a contract with Wright Water, who is, who we want to operate our wastewater treatment plant. It's a sort of a temporary agreement. The rates are higher right now because it's a temporary agreement. We did not have time to work through the long or permanent annual agreement yet because of his schedule and our schedule. But basically what this does, it's a not to exceed, I believe, $15,000, and it will allow us to pay them, get them officially onboarded and start paying them from May 1st. I think it's retroactive to the 1st, I think. And it's, it's basically, they're gonna provide an operator, three days a week. The A-level operator, three days a week, will be here three days a week. They'll be on call 24/7. There's a rate sheet attached. I feel very comfortable with this company. I have vetted this company through other communities, through engineering firms, and through state agencies. So I feel very comfortable. I've talked to the operator, Travis, I've had extensive conversations with him. They've actually assisted us in a couple things that they haven't charged us for because we didn't have an agreement, and they, they, they just helped because they wanna help, so. I would recommend approval of this agreement, and then prior to the 60-day expiration date, we will have a, the annual or longer, longer than that, it's a little more.
Make a headway back to plant?
Yes, we're, we're, yes, we're meeting benchmarks and we're doing things. There's still a couple things that need to be done before we see everything really turn. One of the intricacies of a plant like ours is, especially with the treatment process, you make an adjustment today and you have to wait a week to 10 days for the bacteria to figure out what's going on and see how it's gonna react. And we've all been talking about it, but our UV light system needs repair. There was a repairman out today that's getting us a list of parts. Thinks he can limp us along on this system we have until we have time to have money to purchase a new one, and a new UV system is budgeted for fiscal year 25 out of the capital improvement plan.
Unless someone objects, if you see the, the version that you have for you, the last sentence in paragraph 16 says the contract is effective. Is effective, shall be effective upon signature of both forms. I'm gonna change that to May 1st, 'cause you're wanting to pay them.
Did I do it on the front page? I may not have. I probably.
And if you're wanting to pay them for May 1st or if not, it'll be effective when they. Actually, let's leave it.
Yeah.
It'll be effective when they sign it. That's okay. If they, if we, we need to come back with a contract amendment to make it effective earlier to pay them or services performed, we can.
Do you need to be backdated in order to cover any services they've done for us already? Liability-wise?
But we just, we'll make an amendment to that and.
I kinda put you on the spot with that question, I'm sorry.
You know what, I think what he contemplated was.
Shall be completed.
That's okay, that gives us a little more than 60 days.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's do effective date, March 1st, I mean, May 1st, if that's okay. If they've been providing services.
Bob has had nothing but good things to say to them that they've been very, very helpful.
I agree.
But which makes me feel comfortable, 'cause my name's on the consent order with DEQ. Yeah, that's on camera. Where's the red?
No, I think it's a very good thing to go with this company.
I do too. Commissioners?
Very, very good thing.
Anybody have anything else?
I'm on board.
I'll make a motion to approve agreement with Wright Water Corporation in an amount not exceed $15,000 to operate the wastewater treatment plant for 60 days, subject to negotiation and approval of acceptable contract by the city attorney.
Second to that.
Now, tell us how you feel, Jason. Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah? Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Number seven. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve amendment to December 18th, 2023 wastewater solid sledge transportation contract with environmental management incorporated to provide that the total contract cost should not exceed more than $106,305, rather than $97,850.
Just as the agenda item suggests, we had the original agreement for the $97,000. They went over. It was a little bit difficult to track because they're hauling loads and, and by weight. But they went over, and when we got the final bill, it was 106, whatever's in that agenda item, so we want to pay them.
This has completed this.
Flood removal is complete, yes.
In the future, we would like for them not to do that, but.
And I have discussed that with the owner. He was actually out of town and they kept hauling. We had some weather problems, so when they could get in, they were getting in, getting it done. I didn't realize it. Nobody realized it.
So they didn't honor the not to exceed part?
They're requesting to be paid. I think the decision, well, it's a question for Tammy, but the decision is up to you all.
I don't know. There is some risk in.
Doing business like that? There's some risk in doing business like that? I'll just say it.
Well, and there's, but there's also, I mean, you know, there's risk on both, both ways. If they provide a service that we didn't, we don't pay for.
I understand that, but we're gonna pay for it.
They did do a, they didn't do a lump sum. They didn't say, we'll do all this for this lump sum. They didn't say, we'll do all this for this lump sum. They said, we'll do this for this dollars per pound, as I recall, not to exceed. If we're lump sum, I think our defense if we were sued would be, would be better.
And I also think that there's a strong probability we may need them at some point for something.
Oh, I'm not, I just, you know, still a lot of money and I just, just my job to ask questions and not be happy with companies when, when we don't. We're not following the rules to the letter. So, yes, they should be paid.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to December 18th, 2023 wastewater solid sledge transportation contract with Environmental Management Inc. to provide that the total cost, contract cost shall not exceed $1,603,500 rather than $97,850.
Yeah, I'll second that.
It's easy to second it. Yes.
Vice Mayor? Sarah? Yes, Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Item agenda number eight, considerate, consideration, discussion, and possible action to modify utility rates.
Sure. Just on your budget.
So to back up a little bit to the budget notes, that section that I skipped, talking about sewer and water rates. Over the last three years, the expenses associated with the business, including wages, utilities, professional services, materials, fuel, everything has significantly increased. While we empathize with the financial challenges our citizens face daily, we take no pleasure in recommending the minimum increase of 10% for water sewer rates, which is what is included in your proposed budget. And we still then are needing to budget for 40-something thousand dollars to be used out of savings. So I think maybe we want to visit about that piece first before we move to the commercial sewer recommendation?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So your green sheet, so that you can find it easily. The first page there shows you the increase. The current cost is on the left and it's just, we've just randomly chosen some numbers kind of near the 1,000 gallon mark. It's not an easy way to run that report, so we just had to look for customers. So you can see the current cost. The next column would be if we had a 5% increase, then you can see that the monthly increase for the minimum bill would be $2.55, and for the year, $30.61. And just continuing down the column, for example, I'll use myself because I'm the 4,200 gallon person that we used. My monthly bill would go up $3.74 and I'd pay $44.90 more a year if you did a 5% increase. The 10% increase that we are recommending, Bob and I visited about this, would double that basically. So for a minimum bill, 488 more a month, 58, 60 more for a year. For the 4,200 mark, which is kind of a middle-of-the-road mark, a lot of people are right around there, it's 726 and then 8714 per year. And then we've included 15%, 20%, and 30%, if anybody would like to consider those options.
This is only an increase in the water part and sewer part. There's already an increase in the trash by contract of 1.4%, and then the ambulance stays flat. So if, if it's a household of four and they use 10,000 gallons, add a 10% increase, they're going to pay $11.61 more a month. If you do a 15% increase, they're going to pay $17.30 more a month.
And then on the bottom of that page.
What's wrong? Not, I just got a question, go ahead.
I'm so sorry, you ask your question first?
What did we raise them last year?
7%.
Was it 7?
So on the bottom of that page, you can see the full projection or have estimated what the increase, what that difference in revenue would be at 5%, 10, 15, 20, and 30. So with a 10% increase, our water revenue protection would be up there.
$50,000.
Sewer would be $70,000.
Budgeted 10% increase still leaves a shortfall on the budget. With raising the.
Commercial?
Commercial as well.
Do you want us, you want us to go to commercial and talk about that commercial sewer part?
That does not, 4,600 does not.
It's that way we have a whole picture.
Is what you, right.
Entails.
So this, that 10% does not include a commercial increase for sewer, which is the next piece of the puzzle, so let me tell you. Also proposed, but not included in the budget, is an increase in commercial sewer rates. Historically, commercial rates for sewer were much lower than residential rates. We've been informed anecdotally, because this was done way before Bob or I were around, that this was done as an effort to entice businesses to come to Perkins. While we don't disagree with this line of thinking because this has caused many of the problems with our sanitary sewer system and our wastewater treatment plant due to chemicals or fats, oils, or grease, staff is recommending that the minimum charge for commercial properties be raised to match the minimum charge for residential for sewer. At fiscal year '24 rates, the increase would be $20.04 per month. So right now, commercial properties pay $15.62 and residential pay $35.68. And then at this time, they would still have the, I'm sorry, it's late, I'm running out of words, the discounted rate per gallon. We're only recommending just making the minimum charge match residential and commercial. Now, you've got materials in front of you that show you if we raise both, if we only raised gallons. If you go to the pages that look like this, kind of the smaller square with the last three pages of your green packet, the first square shows the difference if all commercial charges. I'm so sorry, please give me just a second, right. I think you've got the same square twice, and I apologize for that.
I don't think so.
No, you don't think so?
Minimum bills.
Looking at the difference, oh, right. Resident, oh, okay. If commercial charges are raised to match residential charges, I think that, is that if everything has changed? See, I don't think that's right, I apologize. We're going to skip that one. The next one is, right, it's the per gallons charge. So if the gallons charge were changed but not the minimum bill, that would be the difference in the price to the right. At, I just, I randomly pulled a bill. So for some entities, it would, it would double. What they're paying now, is that right? No. It would double if we did both. It would be a larger increase though here. For example, if you look at, if you look at Cafe 33, that's one down, Cafe 33. A resident would pay for 47,000 gallons, $192.29. Commercial, they pay 47, for, for the 47.8, they pay 85.39. So if we raised the per gallon rate to match residential, then their bill would increase $106.90.
So basically, what we're contemplating is sewer service is sewer service. It costs the city a certain amount of money to have sewer there to start out at your base. Then it was contemplated long before us that they would charge commercial different than residential. I think that is very unique. I don't think other communities do that. We've done some research showing that other communities don't do that, but that's where we're at. So if factored into your budget that we've worked on so far, which is projected, you have to project things, you've got to build a budget. So we built the, the proposed budget that you first considered tonight with a 10% water and sewer increase and with an increase in the base.
It's not in there. That's not, is it?
Commercial.
The commercial basis.
Would only be an increase of the minimum.
Did I put that in the budget? I really apologize, y'all, I'm really.
I think we did.
Wearing down. I think, I, I go with Bob, Bob has a better memory.
What I'm going to do is recommend that, whether or not you do it tonight or we think about it, and we can always bring it back at the special if we need to. But if there's going to be, or maybe even another special before the May 28th. Raising rates is always hard. We've tried to do rate raises, you know, 3% every other year or whatever, and then we did 7% last year, which was more. But the way everything is increasing, it's, it's just cost prohibitive not to do it. If, if rates aren't raised, there's, there's a revenue issue. Or you can look at it, there's, there's an expense issue. But if we go move forward with Wright Water on the long-term annual agreement, we're looking at 119,600 a year to do what we were spending roughly 85,000. So we'll kind of take the, the operator we had will be gone out of the budget plus benefits, which is somewhere around 85,000.
But it's saving us in fees from DEQ if we.
Well, it's, it's a necessity. It is, I, I totally agree, but it's, it'd be, it, it also becomes a, a financial need.
Right.
Because that money has to come from somewhere. We're paying more for chemicals, we're paying more for electricity, we're paying more for everything. Just like, you know, OG and E sent a letter out, greetings, your bill's going up 13%. Well, that impacts, I know it impacts everybody at home, but it also impacts the city. And one of the things we have to do is remain viable financially to be able to operate. Or you cut somewhere else on the spending side.
What if we, well, and what if we don't, where, I am right there with you, Rachel. What if we don't cut the residential and we bring the commercial up to equal the residential? How will that affect the budget?
I'm so sorry, ask me that one more time, please?
If we don't raise the residential rates 10%, but, but we go back and we make the commercial match the residential.
It would not, off the top of my head, without running any numbers, we only have about 120 commercial accounts and we have 1505 total.
Right.
So I don't think, I don't think it, it's going to balance out.
And I would also question.
Yeah, I mean, you're right on that, I mean, I just, it was something I needed.
I would also question, or I am questioning at this time and we're working through it, the utility billing on why certain accounts are considered commercial versus residential. I mean, there's the obvious commercial, there's generating sales tax, but there's some that are listed under the commercial rate, like apartments that aren't generating sales tax, they're not doing anything like that, so.
And they're still listed as.
So it wouldn't matter if they all had the same rate?
Yeah, but it's, it's definitely a big ask or request. You know, I would, 15% would be much more preferable for the budget. And the things we have going on, 10%, it'll work. And if, if there's a need or a want to go less than 10%, then we need to go back to the, to, you know, finesse the budget on the, on the spending side, which is fine, we can do that. But this is the complicated part about building a budget. And, and there are communities, there's some, some community we ran into that had a resolution where rates went up automatically every year.
Well, I was going to ask, I was going to ask a few things. Where does our rate compare to others' our size?
Our sewer is always higher because we have to service the debt, so it's always higher. If we did the 10% rate, I think there are three, I think we would be, we looked at Chandler, Stillwater, Manford, Cushing, Drumright, Guthrie, Perry, Yale, and Pawnee. Perry, Yale, Pawnee, I believe, would still be more expensive than Perkins.
Even with the 10% increase, correct? Okay.
And it makes sense if you think they're kind of like us, not a lot of businesses, not a lot of sales tax.
I think the same question last year that was asked still applies this year. I think we asked last year, and I'm not cutting anything when I say it, we asked last year, would this cover us for a few years? And at the time, it looked like it would. Unfortunately, expenses have gone up, and the bad part is wages haven't increased to match the expenses. Anyone's standards.
Staff asked for 5% and we settled for 7% because we were thinking 10 last year, right?
On the utility increase?
Staff was at requesting 5, and the commission, we decided on 7 just so that we wouldn't have to come back here, but I, everything costs so much more like this.
We've had some big things happen.
We have, we.
You know, bringing in a private company to run the wastewater plant is more expensive, but we've had that position open for.
Since March.
Since March, and we have two applications.
They're not qualified.
They're not even near qualified.
Qualified.
Because we have to have at least a minimum of a B operator for DEQ. And a, and, and A is much more preferable for DEQ. And I talked to, or I have a, a call in to a gentleman that I don't think has those, he might have a B, but that's the only thing we've, we've had.
We've been down that road and it hasn't been, I mean, unfortunately, it hasn't been successful. We need to go this route.
We, we.
The operation of the plant, in my opinion.
We went to the Oklahoma Rural Water Association conference and, I mean, several people talked about you can't find, you can't find anybody with these licenses.
Oklahoma Rural Water Association had one application for a wastewater treatment plant operator, and it was the guy that left here.
I think the gentleman that called you did, he doesn't have a B.
Last name, first name, start with an S?
I'll just have to, I'll get with you after the meeting.
I called him back, he called me back, I called him back. We'll hook up tomorrow.
We've also been informed that our insurance provider, O-MAG, is capping coverage for sewer backups at 25,000. So, you know, it's one of those pound, was it penny wise, pound foolish that, you know, if we're not, if we're, we're letting our system age to the point where we're inquiring more, inquiring more torque liability payouts, would make more sense to give the money now to improve the system so that we're not having to be running that. I, I told Bob that I'm, I mean, Bob and I, I've told Bob that I disagree with our insurance company as to what we may or may not be liable for on sewer backups. But, but it's, for the most part, it's their call, but I'm just throwing that out as, again, you know, if you raise the rates a little bit more than you, than you're comfortable with now, if we're able to actually make the improvements that we need to make, and they solve some issues.
Bob, go ahead.
No, one further clarifying question. I don't like to say it, but we're going, I'm going to. I don't like to say it, but we're going, I'm going to. Keep us in the black. I mean, the reason I'm asking is, yes, we're raising, but we're still in the hole. We, we're still having to pull from surplus in order to make budget. That don't work. I mean, it, it, it only works until you run out of money in the surplus. It's like my home budget. You can, you, you can have something and supplement it with savings if you have it. And when you run out, you run out. I mean, I, it's just a clarifying question.
In all honesty, you know, fifteen percent, I think, would make us not have to use money out of savings this year. And I'm a very conservative budgeter, so barring any big thing, we might be able to put some back into surplus at a fifteen percent increase. Just, but, but big things seem to have been sort of a trend.
It's a big thing, and I just, it's a clarifying question.
We're, we're, uh, also, it's no more than an educated guess is what the budget is. We're projecting revenue. We're projecting expenses. We try to look at the crystal ball and find out what's gonna happen.
So, um, this is my personal opinion, and, uh, I think Commissioner Dickerson got sick, but I, I would like to, I'd like to table it. And I, I, I want to think about it more. I want to ask more questions. Since we have another meeting this month, I, I don't know how, I don't know how you feel about it.
I'm perfectly fine doing that. I gotta think about this. This is gonna affect, yes, it's gonna affect us, but it's gonna affect.
And I'll try to send out some more information. And then obviously be there to field any questions or. And we can project out, um, more than ten thousand gallons to get twenty, thirty. I mean, if there's a big, you know, family of ten or something, we can try to look for big accounts and, uh, project out what that increase would be so you can see. You know, in real dollars, what does it mean for X percent, XXX, whatever?
This is.
So you can make, I mean, it's a big decision. It's not popular. But.
We've always been popular, haven't we? If, so if that's okay with you, gentlemen, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to table this.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to table this to our next special meeting.
The twenty-third?
The twenty-eighth, apparently. And if we do have it on the twenty-third, I'll be here.
Well, that's the other one that we had talked about. Move, okay. Sorry, I had the dates wrong.
I'll second your motion.
Get that seconded.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's not me to the.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
We're almost done. So close.
Finish line. That's spot, right clearly.
Been here so long, you gotta go now.
The concern is that you'll need to, we're, we're hoping that you would vote on approving the budget at that next special meeting. That's the purpose of that meeting, really, isn't it? I don't, I'm not trying to push for an answer.
It's not an issue.
No.
We will work through it. It's not an issue. We'll work through it. There's, there could be a, depending on, we could potentially pass a budget because, and then amend it later. No matter which way it goes. It's not an issue. I don't want anybody to think staff is trying to pressure anyone into changing utility rates.
No, 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 that's not at all.
So we're just gonna leave it and go on.
I just think that, and I'm not making, it's been a long night, number one. Uh, number two, we don't have our entire team.
I completely agree with you.
And I just feel like, uh.
It's a big decision you need to.
Yes, it is. And I, I'll tell you that, this, I need some thought on it. And I, I agree that it needs to happen as to what ratio here and there needs to happen. I'm sure there's some ideas already floating, but.
I, I don't hear.
And I know you're thinking about the people when you only ask for ten. I know that. And I know you know where I work, and you know what I have to see. And it's not easy to, I just need some time.
Completely understand.
I don't hear anybody withdrawing their motion or their second, so.
We're halfway through the vote.
That, Jason?
Yeah.
This is the last one.
Yes. We, we got interrupted in the middle of it. It's the only reason I didn't say it.
Sorry, we just had to think that through.
I, I think that's being wise. That's, that, there's nothing wrong with that. I appreciate that.
I think the citizens deserve it. I think the citizens deserve that.
I make a motion that we adjourn, uh, May fourteenth, Public Works, Perkins Public Works Authority meeting.
I'll second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
They don't all last this long.
She, did she, she said it's a softball game.
It is. It's like one of them tournaments. You might be there all night.